Okay, we'll call the meeting to order, the regular meeting of the City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protemhany.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. The approval of the agenda.
So moved to approve except for item D.
Item which D?
D.
Okay, you want to pull item D on the consent agenda, is that what I'm hearing? Uh huh. Okay.
Just have a quick clarification.
Okay, and I'd like to pull item I just for a quick clarification. Okay, so we have... Okay, we do have a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, so moved.
Okay, seconded, no objection, okay, so ordered. Let's go, we have a presentation, Mr. City Manager. It's a demonstration of the Granicus live streaming software, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's a red letter day, that's a...
We can relax now.
Well, this is a good thing for transparency and informing our public.
Yes, I would agree, and for us it was nice because when we first looked at these systems many years ago, they were very expensive and they've become much more affordable over time, almost like how calculators were when they first came out or personal computers. So with that brief introduction, I'd like to turn it over to James Vega, the Assistant to the City Manager, who's going to lead us through a quick demonstration and would be happy to answer any questions at the end.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and City Manager. We wanted to take the opportunity to provide kind of a run-through of, and I'll try to keep it very brief, but of how to access the live stream and some of the features. We've had a lot of requests for these features and people are using it, but I think we haven't quite gotten the word out to everybody. So to access the live stream, you will visit the Ojai City webpage. There's a quick link for the public meeting, live streaming. You, it's pretty simple, you click that link and when you get to that page, it shows you upcoming events, and we have right now all city board meetings and council meetings on there. So it'll have upcoming events and it'll also have archives. So you can do a couple of things here, you can go through, you know, you want to see the City Council meeting agendas or videos, those are available. You can search the archives, which is a pretty useful function. If you want to see minutes, you type in minutes and it'll show you all the times that an item with the name minutes has been on the agenda of any of those boards or any of the commissions or council meetings. So could save a lot of time if you're researching. And then for upcoming events, you can click on the agenda, or since we're live, you can view this event now. If I click on that, it will show us this meeting. I will instead, I'll probably do that too, but I'll show you something else that's a cool feature, which is you can go to a prior meeting, click on video, and you can pick the item that you want to see. Be forewarned, if you don't like seeing yourself on camera like me, you may want to look away. But you click on the item and it'll go straight to that portion of the meeting.
He looks great. He looks younger on TV. A little wiser there, Mayor.
And you can, you know, it has all the features, you can go full screen.
Yeah, no video enhancements.
No close-ups.
Who's that youngster next to you?
So, but again, you can search the minutes, you can look item by item, so people can actually see the item that they're interested in, not have, well, I don't want to make it sound negative, but they don't have to sit through the whole meeting. So, and then...
It's also very helpful in the newspapers, or the news media, they go right to whatever the story is and...
Yeah, it'll save a lot of time, yeah. So I'll click just to show you, but the, you know, you can view the current event, which it will pull up the same type of video screen. I won't click it because it'll start a loop here with, it'll show us and everything, but that's, in summary, that's, you know, kind of a quick overview of the Granicus program. It'll hopefully allow people to find things a lot quicker and easier. And then we just also wanted to take the opportunity, we just got an update from our Constant Contact mailing list, which is the mailing list everybody signs up for to get notified of meetings. And we have now 2,800 subscribers in the city, which is not bad for a city of 8,000. So we have 2,800 subscribers who signed up to get agendas emailed directly to them. That's an increase of 1,100 subscribers in one year. And we've sent out total 35,000 emails for 135 different meetings since we began using Constant Contact. That's 35,000 emails for 135 campaigns, that's total. So it's been a little over a year. But so, you know, we're just putting a focus on trying to get the word out and using social media, the website, Constant Contact, and now live streaming videos. And the one other thing I'll mention is, to use this, one of the nice things is if you don't have cable, you can now watch the meetings live, and that was an issue for a lot of people, so...
Just one comment, I don't have a TV, so I just love it.
Yeah.
I watched the entire three-hour planning commission meeting, last meeting, from the comfort of my yoga room.
Yeah.
So it was great.
Yeah.
But there is a gap, and that's, I think, and it's the same with the Board of Supervisors video, I think, if you don't catch the video live that night, you can't just later on catch it, you have to wait until it's posted early in the morning usually, just so people...
That is true, so there is like, if you try to watch it from midnight to 7:00 AM the day after, you're kind of stuck, you got to wait till 7:00 AM usually is when it gets up.
Yeah, but it's wonderful, thank you.
Mayor Johnston?
Bill.
How far back are we going to be able to offer the indexed viewing option? Is that just going to be in real-time going forward, or are we able to go back to the archives at all with that?
That's something we're looking at, so we've rolled it out effective, I have terrible eyesight, but I think it was April 10th was the first council meeting. We've talked about possibly going back, but we haven't, we just haven't made a decision yet.
Very labor-intensive to do.
Yeah, it is, and that's actually a good point, Mr. Miley just, you know, pointed out, we should give a shout out to the people that are actually marking these, which our city clerk, our deputy city clerk...
Yeah, I was going to say, it's a lot of work, thank you.
Yeah, so it is labor-intensive, so it's one of those things where if we have extra time, we'd start trying to go back.
Maybe even on as-need basis or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There are still archives, it's just not the video and the Granicus approach doing it.
You just can't pick your items, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, James, and...
Thank you very much.
Steve's comment about the cost of doing this, we can thank the County of Ventura as one of the beta testing sites and one of the early, we paid for that about 12, 13 years ago and worked many of the bugs out. The county's been using it for quite a while, it's great to see us be able to do it here. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah, right, a little hand. Okay, presentation is over, and that takes us to public comment. We have a visiting dignitary here from one of our neighboring towns, Sylvia Munoz, come on down Sylvia. Oh, Mayor of Port Huinimi.
Port Huinimi, thank you.
Oh, you got to get that.
Thanks for the correction.
You brought a pot.
Well, let me explain what that is.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and members of the council, city staff. I'm Sylvia Munoz Knapp, I'm mayor of the great city of Port Huinimi.
Right.
And this year we're celebrating our 70th birthday, so who would think that Port Huinimi is turning 70 this year? It came about in March, you know, and this year is also the 70th year for the state of Israel as well, so it's pretty significant when we made the mark and said, hey, you know, we want to become a city. Although our community actually was started back in the 1800s, and we were one of the three townships, Johnny, you would probably know this, we were one of the three townships when the County of Ventura broke away from Santa Barbara County and Ventura County was created, Huinimi was one of the three townships that actually established this county that we live in. So our history goes back a very long time. But let me go to this gift that we have from the City of Port Huinimi. So part of the 70th was we had an Arbor Day celebration, and we planted two trees, red bud, eastern red bud, and the other one was a tulip tree. And we had some extras left over, and we said, what a great idea to bring them to the communities that were affected by the Thomas fire and debris flow.
Oh, what a nice though.
So we've been on a tour, we started up in County of Santa Barbara and gave two of them, one to the county and one to the community of Montecito, and we've been working our way through the communities. So tonight was my night to come out and present this to the City of Ojai.
Oh, very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to clarify that remark about how I would know about the township, that's because like Brian, I'm an historian of Ventura County, not because I was around when we formed this.
Yeah, right, Mayor.
Yeah, right, my pal here immediately said...
Yeah, right, Mayor.
Johnny, I meant it because you were the CEO of, the CAO of the county.
That's right, Sylvia, but this guy tells me, he immediately says, yeah, you were here at the time, right? Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was very nice, a sister city.
Yes.
We will have that planted at the park. Okay, we have Betty, I can't read her last name, what?
Gwen.
Gwen, Nguyen, oh, yes, Nguyen, okay, come on down, Betty.
Hi, that was such a nice gesture, but I have something more serious to talk about. But thank you, City Council and Mayor, for giving me the opportunities to speak tonight. I'm a fire survivor that lost my home and my vehicle and was forced to close my business recently, and I do want to thank the community for their generosity and selflessness that I witnessed throughout the post-fire, and that is why I'd like to stay here and not go somewhere else, even though the whole thing was a very traumatic experience. But as I try to find a new home, I'm faced with a challenge that's not so kind, and I'm calling on our City Council to preserve the community by putting rent control on the immediate agenda. We need rent control now, or we will lose the diversity and specialness of the Ojai community, and that is what I sincerely feel. The beauty of this community, I know, is very important to the City Council, and it isn't just about preserving our city streets and enjoying our pink moment. To me, the beauty of Ojai is in its artists, its healers, its gardeners, its ceramicists, and its teachers. And since the fire, I'm not sure you're aware, but rents have almost doubled in Ojai. I'm aware of the minimum wage here has doubled, and I'm unaware that there are more job opportunities created in the last few months to meet these increases in the rent. In a small town of 8,000 people, where the majority of its population are working class, how can someone in this community afford a room for 1,200 a month? The quality of life should not be reserved only for the elite that move here. Why has the rent in a community of 8,000 people become higher than the rents in Los Angeles and more and more cases comparable to New York, where people have access to higher income? I think it's just one word, and I think it's greed. Last year, a two-bedroom lease was 1,600. A rental currently on Zillow is 1,200, a two-bedroom has jumped to 2,500. I looked at a studio recently for 1,500, and it was about the size of a parking space with no recent renovations, and it just made my heart break. And I just feel like the landowners and the developers are moving in with a bunch of opportunity into this special place that I know that people want to live and have discovered recently. But we need rent control now, and without the help of our City Council, we need you to step in, just like you did with to regulate Airbnb, which also pushed out renters last year. We need you to regulate rent control, or we will not recognize or preserve the specialness of the Ojai community that we all love and cherish. I believe it will become a place of gray houses and non-diversity, and I'm asking our City Council to step up once again to defend the renters who live here, who contribute to its vitality. My friends who are currently renting in places told me that they are afraid to leave their homes because the rents have spiked. Do we want to promote a climate of fear? People are stressed since the fire, like myself, to find new homes to rent, as the rents have doubled. Most of the places I've seen have not even made improvements to justify any of these increases in rent, and I'd like you to put rent control at the top of your agenda so that Ojai can be a neighborly place once again, built on community and not on greed. The beatification of Ojai depends on this. I'm asking the City Council to step in to support renters' rights to have a chance to live and stay in Ojai. We work hard to contribute to and make this a beautiful diverse community. We are the artists, the craftsmen, the makers who make Ojai special, and if we can't afford to live here, the face of Ojai may lose its specialness and our culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Mr. Mayor, do you know, does the county have rent control?
That's a question probably for the city attorney, I'm not sure that rent control itself is lawful anymore, is it?
Yeah, I'm not sure Ventura County if it has or does not have rent control. The city is severely limited under the Costa-Hawkins Act adopted in 1994 by the state legislature in the kinds of rent control that can be imposed on a going-forward basis. I'm not familiar, though, whether the county has or has not, does or does not have rent control.
They did at one time, and I believe they still have some review, particularly like in mobile home parks.
Yeah, I was just curious, because the Speaker said that she, her home burned down, and that wasn't in the city, that would have been in the county.
Right.
So if the rentals have gone up in the county, then they probably don't have rent control.
That would stand to reason, yeah.
Mayor, you and I talked about this before, you had another term for rent control.
Yeah.
Well, there was another one called rent stabilization, and that's one that's kind of tricky, because the people who oppose the interests in the real estate community, who oppose any kind of rent control, think rent stabilization is also an intrusion. But that's something that, you know, I think we should at least look into. The concept, the difference between the two, if you're not familiar with it, is rent stabilization is sort of like a triple-net lease, where when a person signs up and leases or rents a property, they are subject to all of the normal inflationary, you know, increases in taxes and utilities, but not when a property flips and suddenly there's a, they paid twice as much for the property, speculating on a much higher income, and then double the rents, which is really going to, you know, there was a time when there was enough housing around, when I was a much younger person, and I had relatives who lived in the same place for 40 years as a renter, and they had very modest increases, but, you know, as Paul's pointing out, this is a problem that's far...
So the question is, do we want to direct staff to do that now, or do we want to wait and do it at the end of the decision?
Well, this is under, yeah, this is under public comment, so, yeah, we are not allowed to be actually going into detail or discussion, but we can bring it up at the end of the meeting, you know. Jamie Bennett, are you out there, Jamie? Yeah, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here with Laura Walter. Laura, come on up. About two years ago, I did a presentation before the City Council about the Bravo program that the Ojai Music Festival puts on, and very generously, Councilmember Blatz said, "Come on back every year and tell us about it." Well, I gave you a rest last year, but I'm back two years later to bring you up to speed with what's going on with our Bravo program. As many of you know and many of you don't know, the Ojai Music Festival is the primary source of music education K through third grade. But I'll let Laura tell you a bit more about what the Ojai Music Festival does with the schools, with school-aged children, and also with our senior citizens who live in homes. But before that, I just wanted to let you know that we're just two weeks away from our Ojai Music Festival. During the Ojai Music Festival, we have 300 volunteers from this region, from the town and the outlying areas, who will be volunteering, they'll be volunteering their homes. We have about 60 or 70 homeowners who give us their guest cottage or a guest room in their house to put up our musicians, because as I mentioned during the SCR discussion, we have a problem, and that is, we don't want to impact the hotel rooms, we want our visitors to be able to stay in the hotel rooms and be able to see the festival. So again, 300, and a good number of them are part of the Bravo program, working in the schools with us. This year, we'll have 35 events at the festival, and they range from pop-up 10-minute performances to three-hour performances, and they're listed in there, you'll count 25, but there are another 10, because we also do lectures on the tennis courts between the concerts. So it's quite something. We are just gearing up, and then they all start arriving, because we go through a week of, or 10 days of rehearsals. So you, that's a free event, by the way, anyone who is wandering around the town and hears some music emanating from the bowl, will be setting up our sound equipment, our lighting equipment, and the orchestra. And this year, every year we have a house band, if you will, and this year it is the Mahler Chamber Orchestra, based in Berlin. 39 players will be coming in for that, and this orchestra's never played in the western United States, so it's quite an exciting thing for people who are interested in classical music to be able to see them. They're an unbelievable chamber orchestra. We're also bringing in a group called the Jack Quartet. We typically have a string quartet or a smaller musical group that comes along, and quite a number of soloists, pianists and singers, because we have operatic pieces as well. So it's going to be quite something we get underway as we pass out the program. And we also passed out a sheet which has the specifics that Laura will be talking about concerning our Bravo program. And with that, Laura Walter.
Hi, hello, Mayor and City Council, thank you so much for having us. It was so exciting to be here two years ago, and somebody actually saw us on the closed-circuit TV, or when it's broadcast, and she called us right away, and she said, "I want to volunteer," and she's one of our lead volunteers now, so people in the city are very excited to watch these proceedings. One of the things that the Bravo program was designed for is to fill in the gaps in music education in the public schools that aren't happening. So we're providing all of the music education for kindergarten, first, second, and third grade in the public schools. The school district doesn't fund any of that. We do that through grants and through the Women's Committee, they're fundraising, the Holiday Home Tour goes to support that, and we have people working all the time. One of the great things about music or the arts education is that it brings the person into the present moment with the people that they're with. And I've seen the children who have lost their homes, about an average of three in every class, I teach 26 classes a week, and about three in each class have lost their home or had some sort of trauma. And it's amazing how in a half an hour of music and play and movement, that trauma can dissipate and recede to the back of their brain, and they can be present and in the moment. Yeah, we go into 18 schools and senior centers, and at this time of year, one of the exciting things we're doing is called the Bridge Program, where I take six different third-grade classrooms over to the gables, and we sit on the floor, the children sit on the floor, not the seniors, and the seniors are in their walkers or chairs or wheelchairs around the periphery of the room, and we sing folk songs and we interact, and it is something to watch a third grader, which is nine years old, walk up to a 90-year-old and put their hand out and say, "Hello, I'm Ben, please tell me your name." And then we progress from that, we start singing "Clickety-Clack," and we make a train, and then we make a big train, and the children are delicate with the bodies around them, it's magical to watch. At the end of this experience, I asked the children if they had anything that they would specifically like to thank the seniors for, that they were especially appreciative. I didn't prompt this at all, I just asked the question, and their comments were such, so thoughtful and of such depth, they said things like, "We really appreciate that they're here, we really liked hearing them sing with us, I really liked how they smiled at us, I'm so glad that they're here for us and that we could shake their hands, and they really helped us with our behavior." Because all year long, we talk about that line of appropriateness, and how we're going to have fun and play, but not cross the line, and Trevor Quirk's son landed and stood up, and he goes, "They really helped us not cross the line, Ms. Laura." I said, "Well, that's so true." We serve 2,800 people throughout the year, and that does not include the free children's concerts that are going to be happening. Let me tell you about those Thursday at 10:00 AM, sorry, Friday at 10:00 AM at the Art Center, and Sunday at 10:00 AM at the Art Center, there are free children's concerts, and those are going to include pieces about animals, and it'll be very child-friendly. We have 1,075 workshops per year that are presented. Repeat experiences are 32,250. A repeat experience is one child having one music experience, or one adult having one music experience. Throughout the year, we've provided 32,000, and that's up from about 12,000 last year. So we've really increased our presence in the schools and in the senior centers. Twice a month, we go to the Continuing Care Center and play and sing with the seniors there, and then I talked about our program at the gables. We have seven different artists and residents who go into the schools and do various musical activities with the children, and all of this is at zero cost to the students. I'm wrapping up now. We have the Music Van Program, which goes to 11 schools, all five public schools, and several of the private schools, and this year we had a professional clarinetist, the professor down at Cal State Northridge, who came with her pianist, who's a graduate of the Paris Conservatory, and we had 850 fourth, fifth, and sixth graders in attendance, 75 junior high and senior high students performed. And Francoise from Paris afterward said to me, "I am so surprised, these children are so attentive, they're so happy to be here, they hug each other, they ask excellent questions. I had no idea that this was happening in Ojai, and they're down in Northridge." So that was nice to hear, we were...
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Everybody, and thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
We have, let's see, I've got two here, Jeff Kroll.
Good evening, everyone. I have a handout that I would like you all to read later, but I'll just summarize it. First off, I want to let everyone know, we were extended for our permit until August 8th, so we're one of the three that has the state extension. July 1 is a real important date coming up this summer, because last Friday, the BCC and other, the two other agencies basically issued an emergency order that you all have, and I'm just going to summarize some of the update. One of the things the state is doing is there will no longer be a double application for medical or adult submitted to the state, will only be one application. So this is happening a lot faster than we planned. The state really wants to really just have the three departments, Consumer Affairs, Health and Safety, and the other department, to have one prevailing rule. There's been one about three-time increase in city and county acceptance of the state standards of cannabis control, meaning that they're not just piecing together the approval for this function, or that function, or this other function, they're actually just adopting the state. I was contacted by all three state departments and gave them our input. Another thing that they're doing is they're not going to charge two separate fees for adult or medical, it's only going to be one fee. Now, it hasn't been determined what that fee is going to be, the input from all the collective cooperative owners and dispensaries over the next five to six days will modify this emergency order a little bit more. I want to thank everyone for the testing ordinance of doing the testing laboratory. I've actually interviewed a couple of people who are very interested in possibly opening up a lab, and one is USB, of doing an actual pilot program here to teach graduate students the chemistry and testing of cannabis. We may be that location, okay? I'm also interviewing, we do anticipate some increase in staff at some point, and one of my promises or commitments was I was only going to hire within the valley of Ojai, and we've stayed with that mantra, and we're interviewing locals. One thing I also want to point out is that the reduction or consideration of that annual fee, it's based on the gross income of a dispensary, so most of the cities that are considering adult access are looking at a number between 2% to 5%. That basically translates that if all three collectives were to do a million dollars, and if... translates that if all three collectives were to do $1 million, and if you set that fee at 3%, it would certainly offset the labor and all the hard work that the city staff has done and the cost that's occurred. Any questions? That's about all I... Oh, one more thing. They received $61 million in excise tax from January 1st to March 1st. Governor Jerry Brown last week signed $15 million for law enforcement. So those grants will be available in about 10 days. And it's 15 million out of the 61 million. The rest was the excise tax of 34 million, and 27 million was sales tax. So that's the total that we've done in just three to four months. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, I've got one more card, and then we, I did jump past the two items we pulled, so we'll come back to it. Bryce?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Bryce Killen. I represent Bill and Bliss Page in their efforts to try to open a cannabis manufacturing facility in Ojai. I'd like to speak with you briefly tonight about your Item 1I on the Consent Agenda, the text amendment for testing laboratory, and sort of what I perceive as the possible ills of piecemeal regulation of the cannabis industry. I previously submitted some written comments today. I don't know if you've received them, but I brought some written copies as well, if you guys would like them to take with you later. I'd just like to start by pointing out, as you well know, Prop 64 passed with overwhelming support in Ojai, 65.7%. Literally, 2/3 of the voters in Ojai voted for Prop 64. Prop 64 is a clear vote for increased access to adult-use cannabis. That's really what its purpose is, and I think that that's what the voters are signaling when they voted for it. The people of Ojai want more than just access to medical cannabis. As Mr. Kroll just pointed out, the state is virtually doing away with the distinction. I think it's important that any city or county that's regulating in this field, go ahead and move on and board with that, because that's what's going to allow your industry to actually succeed. The market forces unleashed by Prop 64 are really driving all of the consumers into adult-use retail anyway, whether they're medical patients or recreational users. It's simpler, it's cheaper, it's more cost-effective for the retailers, it's more cost-effective for the patients. And so even if you're a serious medical user, you still find yourself going to a recreational or adult-use retailer, because it's easier to get your medicine. Ultimately, increasing access to adult use in Ojai will increase the access to medical use in Ojai. Piecemeal regulation also artificially constrains the market, and it unnecessarily restricts those sectors of the industry that you choose to actually permit. It inhibits their success and ultimately makes your overall local industry struggle. Many of your current operators have expressed just exactly that sentiment. But by permitting all types of cannabis industry to develop within the city, you'll actually promote a healthy, fully functional industry. You'll allow the market itself to weed out those segments that are not necessary for Ojai's market to actually operate efficiently. And I think allowing that to happen will actually create a much stronger industry for the city, provide better services to your residents. In addition, doing piecemeal regulation, as you probably well know, over taxes, you're precious city staff resources. As someone pointed out at one of your recent meetings, it requires you to keep coming back here and tackling the same issues over and over. The entire supply chain of the cannabis industry is interrelated, and so tackling one section at a time means that you come back and visit all of those sections over and over. I feel that if you step back a little and address it in a holistic manner, you may find that you end up with a solid framework that those future revisions that come with changes to state law will be easier to bolt on to your comprehensive system. Finally, I'd just like to say, simplify. Wherever you can reduce your regulations as opposed to adding additional requirements, just as the state is starting to eliminate the distinction between adult use and medical cannabis, I recommend you do the same. Rather than creating a second set of permits that your operators need to deal in adult use and medical, eliminate the distinction. One permit for cannabis use, if you've got the state license to deal in adult and medical, then that's what you'll be able to do. I think that simplifies your regulations and ultimately will simplify things for your city staff and the operators here in the city. In closing, I'd just like to say, you know, when it comes to your regulations, measure twice, but cut once. Ultimately, I think you'll end up with a better end product.
Okay. Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. That is all of the comment cards I have. Okay, let's go back to the consent agenda. Randy, you had a...
I just wanted to bring up on Section D here, the further agenda items. There was a conversation at the end of the council session, where myself and the city manager were having a discussion about, in that moment, whatever it was. And what I wanted to say was, when you're not listening and you're calculating what your response is, you fail to do the city's business. And that night, I failed to do so, and I was in my own state of mind, and I was actually disagreeing because I wasn't listening. And I just wanted to say publicly, first of all, that's not any way to conduct yourself from this diocese. I just wanted to say that publicly. And second of all, I wanted to say, if I embarrassed our city manager, if I made him feel less than, or if I did anything to offend him, I just want to apologize publicly, that that was not the intent. I just stopped listening. So, thank you. That's all I wanted to do with the...
Okay. Thank you, Randy. I ask that I be pulled just for clarification, but I don't know that I need much clarification at this point, based on some of the comments I've heard here this evening. What we are doing is, this is what, enabling legislation in effect for a licensing process and a planning process?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And just for the testing labs, not for adult use. That'll be coming back to the council at a later date.
Right, okay. So do we have a motion to...
Still moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any objection? If there's no objection, so ordered. And we are now on, what, Item Number Two? Okay. Review and discussion of a proposed amendment to the Cultural and Historic Preservation Ordinance of the Ojai Municipal Code. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Luke Connolly, our Community Development Director, will be giving a brief report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. As the city manager said, I'll try to keep this brief, though I know about two years of work has gone into this particular draft ordinance, which, this is an ordinance, so it's a public hearing item tonight. And this essentially constitutes the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation to council regarding changes or amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance. I think this is about two years in the making, and the changes are really throughout the document. They're probably most evident if you look at Attachment C, I think in the staff report is referred to as Exhibit C. That's essentially the red-line version, where you can see sort of the before and after on that. There's a clean ordinance copy in there as well. So that's about a 16-page document. You can see most of the pages do have strikeout and red-line, though. Not all of these are really substantive changes. If I wanted to touch on those right now, the key changes that are in this ordinance are really differentiating between what would be major projects, which would require a major permit, and creating of minor projects. So major projects would be those that would affect landmarks or sites with landmarks on them, where you'd have alterations ranging from alterations to the landmark, or again, a structure that's on a site with a landmark that would have to be visible from a public right-of-way. This could include, you know, relatively minor changes that would be visible all the way up to demolition or significant construction on those projects. The minor project classification is essentially limited to interior alterations, where the interior is not really a character-defining element of a landmark, even if this could be seen through a window, which typically, interior alterations on historic buildings, unless you have something like, a good example, say, is like a historic theater, where maybe a lobby or something is really a defining element of the building. But generally, you're concerned with exterior changes to buildings. So the minor projects would really be limited to interior alterations and remodeling, unless it's not a character-defining element, or more importantly, ordinary repair and maintenance to the exterior. And Page 2 of 16 of Attachment C, you can see there's pretty extensive text on what constitutes ordinary repair and maintenance. This goes into exterior changes to walls, roofing, window glazing, so even things of the mortaring of walls, if that were a historic element. So it's fairly detailed as to what constitutes ordinary repair and maintenance. And only those things would be subject to the minor project. And I think importantly, all minor projects or permits are also appealable. So right now, a minor permits approval would rest with the Community Development Director. Those would still be appealable to the Historic Preservation Commission, and from the commission all the way to the city council. So really, everything that is requiring some sort of a historic permit, if a party wanted to take it all the way up the food chain, so to speak, they can do so through the appeal process, even with the minor permits. I think another change in here is the specificity that's outlined in terms of what's required for a historic report. It's really emphasizing, which is key with historic structures, is identifying what are character-defining elements. So that's really the focus, is to try to get a greater level of detail and consistency into those reports, create some uniformity. And even if you have reports, I don't know the exact page number in here, if we had a prior report on a historic landmark, where that was an older report, say, 10 years or more, and it's not up to the new standard, we would be requiring a new report that would be looking at things like character-defining elements, if the older report did not do as thorough of a job. So I guess another element too with the report is to emphasize, like CEQA does and most other things where you involve historic preservation, is to focus on consistency with the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic structures, to not sort of create a new tier, but to use that established standard and reference that in the report itself. I think, as I said, there's a lot of changes in there, but those are really the key elements. Again, this has, I know, gone through several hearings between 2016 and now. I know we have a member of the commission here tonight, and I believe this just went last on April 12th. So it's a relatively short time from the commission to the city council tonight. That concludes my comments. I'm sure there'll be some questions, and I'll be happy to answer those.
Johnson, I have a couple of questions of staff.
Sure, yeah, Bill.
Just from the standpoint of the structure, of how ordinances are written, I'm curious as to why the added terms of site of merit and structures of merit are not defined as other terms like that are in the ordinance. In other words, if you look at the red-line beginning on Page 1 of 16, Attachment C, there's historic districts, which are defined, added. Structures of merit, I don't see any definition of structures of merit in the red-line. Also, site of merit is added on Page 3 of 16. I see no definition of site of merit. I'm uncomfortable with an ordinance like that without, like this, without definitions. That's one question I have. I didn't see any. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I can't point to it right now. I thought there was a definition of structure of merit in here.
I don't see it.
Mayor and Council, I'm happy to speak to that.
There's reference to structures of merit in existing code, but not defined.
Correct. So the, and this can be changed. The proposed text doesn't add a specific definition for the terms that are used anonymously, structures of merit or sites of merit, based on the commission's adjustment over time to not recommend changes to the existing language in Section 4813, that creates structures of merit. But that's a point worth clarifying.
Right, especially when it's added to the purpose of the, in the preamble.
Well, I think maybe if that section, the language in there in 4813, at the bottom of Page 8 of 16, would it help if that were also included in the definition?
I think so.
Okay.
It's been an issue throughout, in terms of defining these terms.
Right.
And I just, that's one thing that just sort of leapt out at me. I couldn't find it. I was going to ask you a question, whether you could find a definition in here.
I knew there was one in here, but it's not in the definition section. So it is that section, which it defines them as something less than a landmark, but still, these would be sites or structures where you have some sort of historic architectural or community-based aesthetic reason...
Right.
...to note them, and I think essentially keep a list. I sort of look at that personally as these could ultimately be things that could be landmarks.
Right, it's a list without, I understand that. But another issue is that historically, and this is an issue for governance, the maintenance of such a list without city approval of a property on that list has been interpreted by some of your predecessors as having to involve a degree of discretionary review that, even though they weren't included, weren't approved by city council to be on that list. You understand what I'm saying?
I certainly do.
And so that's another issue, I think, of clarifying, you know, what council approval is required in order to kick into discretionary review or not, as opposed to taking something that is an action of commission that basically never gets council approval, that then, because it's on a list, not approved by council nevertheless becomes a basis for saying any discretionary review.
Correct. Sounds like you want to officially sanction that list if it's going to have any meaning.
If it's going to kick people into discretionary review, at least it's something I'd like to consider. I have another question.
Okay. Just to speak to that point, as proposed, this does not impose any additional review requirements on structures or sites of merit, and none exist at present. There is a list created some time ago, but it was never approved or adopted by council. That point can be clarified in a definition.
That's what I'm trying to say, is clarify, especially when you're adding terms to the preamble, okay? The last question, I promise I'll stop until later.
You don't have to.
Okay. The whole structure of requiring an additional historic resources review for a major work permit, even if one has already been done and there's a landmark agreement with a character-defining elements, and I understand there's provisions in here to upgrade and update character-defining elements, and I think that's very important, because some of them are not well-done in the past. I fully agree with that. But the burden on the property owner is, okay, I want to, say, put new, I want to replace my siding. They're going to say, "Oh, I got to do an historic resources survey to replace my siding." Basically, is what's being said, if it's more than a certain number of square feet. Am I incorrect on that?
It would, could be a major work permit if it exceeds what would be defined as, right, 100 square feet is the threshold.
Here's my issue with unintended consequences, okay? At what point does that added cost and of, you know, the historic resources survey, that burden is being placed on the property owner, on top of what they want to do in terms of, you know, repair, okay? Let's say they've got rotten siding and they want to match it, but they got, you know, they want to match the siding, they want to do the right thing, but they got to put new siding on, all right? And at what point do they go, "You know what? Maybe I just don't want to do it, because of this extra burden that's being placed?" I mean, in other words, we want to have the right kind of repairs done, and I understand the motivation for this. But by saying that that extra burden has to be on the property owner, are we maybe having some unintended consequences in terms of discouraging responsible major repairs?
It's foreseeable. If you add cost, it could get people to defer. That's true.
And they're having to go through, you know, deliberation. I'm just saying, these are the kinds of things that I, I just want to make sure I was sure about in my perception before we start deliberating.
Right. Well, I wasn't here through the process to develop this. I realize most of, maintenance is clearly maintenance, but there's still caps on the area that, so you're right in the sense that if you do a very large area of maintenance, it's not going to be considered maintenance anymore.
And there's no option. You've got to do an historic resources report, and that has to be paid for by the property owner.
Well, it would then be a major project. If you had a prior report that was good...
Who defines good?
I would certainly be one of those people. And I think looking at the character-defining elements and comparing it to the standard identified in here, that's what I think we're looking at, is not to get everybody to update a report, but if it's an old report that's deficient in light of this ordinance, we might want to consider that.
Right. And, but there is a provision where the city can pay for updating the character-defining elements portion.
I believe that could be done.
I'm just saying.
Mayor and Council, there's two options here. One is to allow, if in the budget for any given year, the city to pay for updating the reports. Another option would be to empower the director for either major or minor work permits to, in the core exercise of his or her professional evaluation, not require a new historic resources report if a project, for example, was landmarked a year ago and already has a good one.
So in other words, we would revise the language that said the applic- So in other words, we would revise the language that said, the application shall require an historic resources report. It's a shall, there's no wiggle room.
Right. We can add a sentence that notwithstanding the prior.
That's the way it is now.
Right.
That is correct. Right now, a major work permit needs a new historic resources report. A minor work permit, the director can require one, and that can be adjusted to, in both cases, allow the director to make that decision.
I just want to be clear on that, that it's a shall, no matter how well-defined the existing list of character-defining elements is. No matter how good a job we already did, you got to have to do another one.
Right. There wouldn't be no purpose if you have a valid report that you're satisfied with.
That's not what this says.
I would agree that there's no point in doing duplicative work.
Okay. So maybe we want to find a way to have a quality control rather than a shall for everything.
Or if necessary.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just wanted, pardon me, Mayor, I wanted to say the same thing. It's a redundancy of a permitting process, which I wouldn't before. But the other part of this is, is you could put a timeframe on that report, whether it's five years, ten years, twenty years, whatever the Historic Preservation Commission would want to do. But I see that taking the gray out of the director's hand and making it definitive. So if you have a report, and you're doing an upgrade, and your report is five years old and the limit is ten, then that report is, you know, allows you, yeah, allows you to continue. If it's ten years of grade or whatever the timeframe that they choose, then you would have to redo a report, and I understand the benefit of that.
Yeah. But right now, it's, there's no wiggle room.
Right, right.
You want to do major work, you got to do another one.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question, kind of in furtherance of Councilmember Wyerick's comments, with these definitions on specifically looking at page three of six, where it says historical landmark, historic district, site of merit, or point of historical interest. And I didn't see a definition on the point of historical interest, but I see that that's a phrase that is not a red line. It must be from the prior ordinance. But then it goes down and it talks about public hearings and everything, but it talks in each of these paragraphs of the historical landmarks, the historic districts, site of merits, and points of historical interest, until you get to D, where it says, if the conclusion of the Historic Preservation Commission is that a historic landmark, district, or point of interest does exist, but it doesn't say then about anything site of merit.
Or structure.
Right. Or, well, this is devoid of structure anywhere in Section 4-8.05. But the recommendation at the top, it talks about specifically sites of merit, but then it doesn't say that the sites of merit are ever going to be referred to the City Council for approval with a recommendation. I don't know whether it was just omitted, but I didn't see any definition for what defines points of historical interest either.
That's a point that can be clarified. There is a definition in the existing code for point of interest, and the clarification is that it's point of historical interest. And that's the site of something that once existed that doesn't exist anymore, you know, the landmark was destroyed many years ago, and you would have a, could have a plaque there. That one wasn't given detailed attention, given that it wouldn't be coming up in terms of current permits, but that point can be clarified. The current definition of point of interest should be point of historical interest, and that term used throughout. And the same as we talked about before with structures of merit and sites of merit, those two should be harmonized to be one or the other and used consistently throughout, with the clarification that it requires council approval.
Let me ask a question, or is it turning on process here? Is there a public hearing supposed to be open here this evening?
Yes.
Okay. So at what point do we, after we've had presentation from staff and a few questions, as opposed to deliberating over rewriting?
Somewhere between questions on clarification and deliberations is the proper point.
Okay. Well, are we at a point where maybe we should allow the public to weigh in, and then we can even continue the matter if necessary for a redraft?
Certainly.
If that is where we're going with some of this. Okay. Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
So with that, let's, we'll open the public hearing, and I have a card from Brian.
Hello, Brian Akins. I'm back. This hat is, I'm now with the Chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission after being the Vice Chair for three years. So when did this all start? We'll take you back a little bit to a emergency meeting that was called December 11th, 2014, between the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission, trying to decide on whether to allow the NEF lounge to be destroyed, my turn, or not. The Historic Preservation Commission said unanimously no, the Planning Commission said unanimously no. The Ojai Valley Inn appealed that ruling, and so we were all brought back into a special meeting on December 29th, 2014, when we walked in the room and saw for the one and only time seats reserved by tape. And we all went, what the heck? And then we were introduced to the, all the attorneys from Chicago who had to give up their vacation plan so they could come to our little metropolis of Ojai and step all over our municipal code. And so things changed. They filed an appeal, they got a resolution, thank you, Gil, now I know where these are, 1454 for a revised design review, and 1455 for approval of a work permit, and that work continued. After that took place, we were counseled, given the task of the Historic Preservation Commission to look at the municipal code and to recommend changes. So we've actually been working on that since January of 2015. It's been a long-involved project. I hear questions on the historical, historic structures of merit, the historic sites. My understanding was that the discussion was paired into two different things, historical landmarks and sites of merit, that those things were going to be handled separately. I do hope that we will have the opportunity at a later date, if that's so, to discuss sites of merit. I would also like to compliment Mr. Summers, who took the bull by the horn and put together a term sheet that we could understand, and hopefully you can understand, and where we could have some discussion on that. And that was a great meeting that we held on April 12th, so thank you, Mr. Summers, for all that. And I'd especially like to thank whoever typed this up, because, you know, typing up with blues and reds and highlights and trying to get that all correct, the only thing I saw was spacing on one part. All right. So I'm here to answer questions the best I can. In my last 22 seconds, I want to point out a very important event that's going to take place in Ojai, and that will be this coming Monday at 2:00, where we will dedicate the plaque for our friend and colleague, David Mason, on the eastern end of the pergola. One other quick thing, I saw fifteen dollars, or fifteen thousand up for a historic resources report. As far as I know, there's fifteen thousand in the historic resources budget for this current year, and as Mr. Connolly can attest to you, we set the priorities in our last meeting with the hope that maybe we could spend that fifteen thousand this year, then you don't have to worry about next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. That was the only card I had on this, so I guess we'll close the public hearing then, and now the council can continue the deliberation. Bill.
Mr. Johnston, I have another question of staff.
Okay. Don't you promise you wouldn't have any more?
No, I said for them.
Oh, for now, okay.
For now. Mr. Connolly, Mr. Summers, on page 11 of sixteen, 2-35 of Attachment C, Part Six on the, on the concept, it's basically the timelines for considering the major work permit within thirty days of receipt, holds, you know, all of that's good. Until, here's my question as we get down to the end. This hearing may be continued from time to time if necessary. In cases of proposed demolition, the Historic Preservation Commission may delay the hearing for up to six months for purposes of negotiation. I understand that completely.
Where are you?
Are you on B or C?
I'm on Attachment C, page 11 of sixteen.
Page 11.
Hang on, just wait one second.
Red line.
This is where the confusion, guys, is, Attachment C, and then you have two, you have different numbers in the middle, the Attachment C.
I'm sorry.
So it's 11 of sixteen, and it's in the middle of the, of the page.
My, here's my question, is that, that one sentence, page 11 of sixteen, Attachment C, this hearing may be continued from time to time as necessary. Does that functionally disable the ability for the applicant to make sure they have a timely review of their, of their application? I mean, who decides this continue, it says maybe, it doesn't have any conditions, it doesn't, in other words, it looks like staff could just say, well, we're just going to keep continuing this, and the applicant doesn't have a time period that they could depend on for having their application reviewed?
If the, I think there's, there's two protections in this language, which is in the existing ordinance, but it can be modified, of course. The one is that if necessary clause, if rogue commissioner, rogue staff, or both were continuing with item beyond the point of necessity, then that could be, that continuous decision could itself be appealed to the council, although that would be an awkward hearing.
Well, I can tell you that applicants have been told that they don't have a right of appeal until action is taken. They have been told that by staff.
Interesting. The, I, not, we'd have to look at what was said in the past, but I think at some point any decision can be appealed, if you have a decision, although it may be faster.
There's a point if there's no decision, because it's being continued.
Well, the decision to continue would be the decision that you'd be appealing.
Okay.
As you can see, it would create
Everybody get that?
A complex.
I got it, I got it.
It'd create a complex situation at council, because they'd still have to go to another body.
Right.
The other protection that exists now is the Permit Streamlining Act. On any land use permit, city can't sit on it forever. If we don't act within timelines that depend on the level of CEQA review, the permit is deemed approved. So that's really the protection for the applicant.
Okay.
All that said, this can be adjusted if we want to give applicants further protection than those protections. For example, hearing may be continued up to two times, or maybe continued
Yeah, something like that.
Up to six months, or
Right.
Something like that.
Something that provides a definitive timeline that our applicants can depend on. That's my personal preference.
I agree.
You know.
Mayor, I just, I wanted to do the, for instance, Brian, you guys had, had one project where you had a rock wall. It took almost two years to figure out how to get that rock wall done. I want to, I'm going to bring that up in a little bit on Attachment Two of sixteen, but I'm just lost on how it would take two years to figure out how to build a native stone wall in the city of Ojai. So again, that is part of what I believe that Councilman Wyerick's talking to, is we can't perpetually extend these discussions to either retire the owner, or retire the board and get a whole new commission. I don't know what it was, but we've got to do something different with that.
He would like to respond.
Can you just answer that real quick? Okay. So.
If you go back and watch the video, you'll see this heat zone over there with Brian Akins going, I've had enough of talking about rock walls, we're going to decide it tonight. Because two years is, I gave all credit to the owner for bearing with us for those two years. That was ridiculous. Okay?
So how do we prevent that in this ordinance?
Right.
But, so I agree with your suggestion. The other thing I wanted to add, part of that ordinance, because they're doing a demolition, was to give enough time to kind of negotiate, help the person see that maybe, you know, destroying it's not the best thing to do, but I agree, you have to have a timeframe on everything. You have to get things done.
It's, yeah, it's really disciplining, you know, there's rights for the applicants, and there's, we have to have a structure that staff has to be held accountable to.
We want a timeline.
Yeah.
I liked, I work on timelines, but, but part on, part on the rock wall was, we can't do anything unless it's on the agenda.
Right.
So, and then it's got to be put on the next agenda, so that's part of the two.
Staff, I'd like to propose that maybe we put a, some type of actual time limit on that, say six months. We could talk at that and discuss it and bring it back to council.
Yeah. And that six-month timeline kind of ties, taps into the existing Permit Streamlining Act. The default timeline for the decision to make, for the city to make a decision on a land use permit that doesn't involve an EIR is six months from the application completeness, so that kind of fits together.
Okay. You satisfied with that answer?
Yeah.
I just had this vision of a chess match with a clock, you know? Your move, and then the time runs. You don't want one side or the other to be able to stall it out, I wouldn't think, you know, but, okay.
Like you're playing lightning chess, I have one, only one person can push the time button, you know, yeah.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Well, Mayor, I just had on page, I just had a couple of them, I'll go over real quick. The repair on Attachment, on Attachment C two of sixteen, it just states, repair replacement of existing fences or walls on the same parcel as a landmark with material that reasonably matches. So again, it seems like we've gone, kind of stepped out of our boundary of what our, our scope of responsibilities are. So in other words, you're here to tell someone that if that's a historic wall, you should maintain the integrity of that wall. And then what you're saying in this paragraph is, and also any other wall that's not deemed historic but is on the site, we'd like you to match the historic wall to the best of your ability. Again, I just think that that's just, you're asking, go ahead, Brian, I just think you're asking too much of the applicant.
It comes down to what's specifically landmark, called out on that landmark.
Right.
So in the, in the case of that individual, that rock wall was specifically called out in the landmark long before I got involved. He had other rock walls on the property we never talked about because they weren't specifically called out.
But what this is saying is you do have the right to, to tell them what to do on the property regarding additional walls and landscaping. I was, again, that just concerned me, that it, that again, now you're empowering yourself to go beyond the scope of what you should be looking at, which is historical sites and elements. And now we're going to be a little, you know, creating a gray area for you.
Right.
And we want you to also, while you're doing it, to mimic this, this wall over here, if you're going to repair that wall. That's all.
So, so I agree with you. Again, it goes back to what was specifically called out. So the, in this case, the rock wall is specifically called out. Now, if, on that property that's within the view from the public right of way, and we had a lot of discussion on that, they all of a sudden decided to put purple and yellow and other rock walls in there, you know, maybe that detracts a little bit from the historic part of the property, so we might say, you know, we're a little uncomfortable with that.
I get it, as long as you don't have the right to tell them that this is what you're going to do.
I, I think if you want to, you should specify in the document that, and it says in there, items, and Mr. Summers can tell you, items that are specifically called out in the landmarking.
Okay. Then my next question is on the public hearings on the next page, three of sixteen. You, we have public hearings, the whole public hearings for the purpose of identifying historic landmarks, district sites of merits, and points of historic interest, and with such hearings held ten days or more after the property owner has been notified, and then you strike that. Why did we strike the ten-day notice? Did we, did we put another
Pointing at the other.
Did we put another notice in place that you'll have twenty days, or you'll have thirty days? Again, I just think we created some gray when we had an actual structured timeline.
Right. So in that one, as I recall, and I'm looking for the exact place, we struck it there because the public hearing requirement is listed elsewhere. So it was a matter of moving it to not be duplicative. The, bear with me a second to find the other location.
I would think it'd be okay for it to be duplicative as long as it matched, because it just provides clarity.
Yeah.
In that regard, I'm fine with leaving it in place for that purpose of, no matter where you read the ordinance, it's clear. That's fine. And to comment on the earlier, the question immediately before, the key in looking at the definition of ordinary repair and maintenance is to also have your eye on Section 4815, which is in the middle of page
That was my next line of questioning.
Nine of sixteen of Attachment C, which is also page two dash thirty-three.
Right.
This is where that definition applies. This rule is, if you have a landmarked parcel, this defines the three states of the world as to what permit, if any, is required for work on that landmarked parcel. If the work is mere ordinary repair and maintenance of the landmark, or of any non-landmark structure on the same parcel, then you don't need either a minor or a major work permit. So that's where if your removal and replacement of the walls reasonably matches the same material, it doesn't need a permit. But if your removal and replacement of the wall on the same parcel landmark would be with a different material, this ordinance, as worded now, would require that that be approved by the HBC, because that wouldn't be the same material. It would be a change in the look. That's a question for the council. Do you want to require that on walls that are not specifically landmarked, that aren't a character-defining element of a landmark, but are on the same parcel as a landmark? That's a policy question. And then the other aspect to think about with respect to 4815 is if the work is greater is if the work is greater level than ordinary repair maintenance. For example, it's higher than these numeric thresholds in the ordinary repair and maintenance definition. For example, you know, repair and replacement of 100 square feet or less of exterior wall or roof. If it's greater than that, it's 120 square feet or 200 square feet, then it's triggered to the level of a major work permit. And so the council could consider whether those thresholds are too high or too low. That's another policy choice. And then work that is on a landmark but interior is only requiring of a minor work permit. And the last point to bear in mind, to realize I'm throwing a lot of points here, is for major work permit, and this was of some debate at the commission, the final recommendation from the commission is that a major work permit would be required for any work that affects a landmark or any non-landmark structure on the same parcel as a landmark that is visible from the public right of way, is distinct from all other structures on the same parcel as a landmark for those larger landmark parcels that don't have, the whole parcel isn't visible from the right of way. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
I have a question on that point.
Or, wait, I'm ignoring this side of the island. Okay, okay, Bill, go.
Let's define, so we're talking about any not, even if it's not a, a part of the character-defining element.
Right.
If it's non, it's, it's, in other words, non-landmark means basically not part of the character-defining elements.
Correct.
But if it can be seen from the public right of way and you want to alter it, rehabilitate it, relocate it, you need a major work permit.
That's how this is defined, yes.
So rehabilitation, I could see arguments about what that means for a non-landmarked, non-contributing element. Also, how small could this be? It's a structure. Are we talking about somebody puts a, you know, a dollhouse up for their kids?
I think we would-
And you gotta get a major work permit to relocate or change it because it's on a landmark property?
If you can see it from the street.
You can see it from the street?
Not my dollhouse.
I'm not sure we have a specific definition of the size of structure. One could be adopted. I think without, in, in the absence of that definition, we would look at, did that structure require a building permit? So-
A lot of them don't. If they're under 200 square feet, it does not require a building permit. Or is it 160? Anyway, certain small structures do not require building permits.
I think at those, at that stage, we wouldn't-
Doesn't say that though.
It'd go back to what, is it a structure?
Doesn't say permitted structure, it just says a structure.
Like a plastic dollhouse that you pick up and put down.
I'm kind of trying to go to the absurd to make the point.
No, yeah, that's fair. The definition will be added. But a stick-built shed, for example.
Right.
That would probably, that would be picked up because in some cases,
Right.
even though a stick-built shed isn't a specifically contributing element of the landmark, it is part of the historic character of the property.
Right, so the kids are playing out back and they're putting something together and you can kind of see it from the street. And dad says, "Well, they've grown up and gone to college. I'm gonna tear it down." "Oh, no, you need a major work permit."
As presently worded, this would pick that up.
Okay.
It's, that becomes a policy choice.
Some of this too, if I could just jump in. Historic preservation is not a hard science. And I think when you focus on the anomalies and the minor cases, which will come up, there's always gonna be something where you don't have a black and white answer. I've never seen that where that's able to happen. Because if you exclude landmark sites and you just focus on the landmark and somebody proposes something on that site that then undermines the landmark, that's gonna be an issue too. So maybe a threshold like something that requires a building permit.
Something that requires a permit, exactly.
That would be something to trip the threshold.
That's my suggestion, is we have something in there that either requires a permit or would have required a permit. It's, you know-
If a person can do it by right with not having to come into this building.
Right.
That might be something you let go.
Right.
I think so.
Well, again, I think that's something that we can take back to HBC. I, I just have one more question, Mayor. If I can, and that's on page 10 of 16. My last comment again, and it's the same thing. We took out a timeline and didn't put a timeline back in. So it just concerns me that we, when we remove a timeline, we're creating a gray space. So it's on the application of major work permits. And it comes down, the application of a major work permit shall include a historic resource, resource report prepared within three months of the submission of the application. And then we strike that. What replaces it?
In this case, that was stricken because, and isn't replaced. In other words, there's no requirement for when the, the historic resource report had to have been prepared relative to the application. There is the requirement that if it's more than 10 years old, rather, if the landmark designation is more than 10 years old, then the historic resource report needs to be updated. The thinking on deleting the three months before the application requirement was to take into account the situation when a landmark owner prepares a report in year one, applies for work to do a portion of a project or a project, and then applies a year later for another project on the same landmark that they feel that the same, that existing report would suffice and they wouldn't want to prepare a new report on that second project a year later. That was the reasoning for deleting this. One approach would, if the council's concerned about that allowance, would be to put a timeline back in, but make it longer, perhaps would, prepared within a year. Or to, as we discussed before, delete the three-month submission requirement, but allow it to be a little more discretion on the development director's position to when to require a report and when not. Or when to require, rather, a new report as opposed to relying on an existing report.
Okay.
That might pick up the concern as well.
Okay, by, by way of procedure, for example, Mayor, is when these questions are being brought up, we're not having any kind of a straw vote or a tie-down. So how are we handling this as far as what we, where we go after this? It sounds to me like there are enough questions that this isn't going to get approved as admitted tonight, correct?
I would agree, in fact.
Therefore, what is the process by which these concerns, is each individual councilperson keeping notes on what kind of motions they're gonna make? Is that the way we're gonna do it?
I mean, one approach would, sorry, Stephen.
That's all right.
One approach would be for the council members who desires to make a motion incorporating all of the, the suggested changes raised tonight. If not all are favorable, then make a motion suggesting their proposed changes and then direct staff to come back with a revised ordinance incorporating those changes.
Okay, now is everybody following this? That they, okay, good, okay.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm okay.
And I'll, to move this along, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that staff incorporate all the comments that the council has brought forward, particularly where it involves definitions and timing and, and the other, the other comments of the council members, and bring it back in a form after those changes are incorporated into it for our review.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Suzie, do you want to say?
No, that's good, I'm good.
Everybody good with that, okay? And then I guess Paul.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes, with appreciation for all the work the commission's done. We're gonna get there.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protemhane?
Yes, thank you, Brian.
Okay, I, I have a question more exposing my ignorance as to where we are on landmarks. There is always the debate, or at least in recent time, there are the debates between whether or not the owner of the property, you know, applies for the landmark or whether the, the city through one of their commissions initiates the landmark. That's, and I know it can be either way. Particularly when we own the property, we can, we are the applicant. But there are benefits and burdens as a result of being designated, right? So if, as a property owner, I ask to have this done for my property, I will get what? Do I have to sign a contract for tax benefits?
You have to apply for a Mills Act exemption.
Right, okay.
Then you'll get a relief on your property taxes.
Is it just the Mills Act or is there some-
Only through the Mills Act.
Okay, and what is the one with the contract on a property?
Mills Act tax allowance is involve a 10-year contract with the city. In return for the tax benefits which are calculated pursuant to statute, the property owner agrees to maintain the historic property pursuant to a stated maintenance schedule.
Okay, the reason for the asking of the question is that there have been a number of suggestions or concerns about the burden on the owner. But the, to a degree, the owner has gotten a financial benefit and so that is being weighed, right? So we're in the process of reviewing this, so that's what we're trying to-
But not always, Mr. Mayor. They can have their land, they can have a property that's been there, declared a landmark without the Mills Act benefits.
That is definitely possible.
It's a separate application.
It is a separate application and it would not, the Mills Act benefit wouldn't be available for those entities that don't pay property tax.
Correct.
Right, but for those who do pay property tax, wouldn't they, wouldn't everybody wants, if they asked to be designated as a landmark, wouldn't they want the Mills Act's advantage to help offset the cost of maintenance?
Well, you would think so, but it also comes with some restrictions on the property.
Right, right, okay, so-
I mean, we've had people come before us since I've been on the council that have come for historic landmark status and said, "We're not asking for Mills Act."
And they don't want any restriction on the property? That's the, the difference?
Right.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's kind of what I was trying to sort out is that there are people that would, would do that. Because in some cases, I know we had one that we just designated a landmark property that I used to live near and dear to. And the, the actual old home was long since redone and became a guest house. And the front property and the people who grew up there and who did the modifications originally came and said, an architect, "How are you guys designating this as historic if it's not the original?" And I know that we've had that debate on other issues, but, okay, enough of mine.
Yeah. I think more-
Asking for education at everybody else's hands.
I think another question, Mr. Mayor, is where the city decides it wants to landmark a piece of private property and the owner doesn't want it landmarked. I mean, that's another issue is to how far we take it in that respect. Because there are some restrictions when it's landmarked and maybe the owner doesn't want the Mills Act protection.
Right, and so we get to sites of merit. Isn't that where we start crossing over the line a little bit?
That's why I'm confused about the definitions.
We need definitions to start with.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that.
Can we have Brian's?
Yeah, okay, Brian.
So, so, yeah, just quickly, our job as a Historic Preservation Commission isn't to say, "Oh, you want to landmark your property? Let, let us do all we can to landmark your property because we think it's a landmark." We'll do that too. But our job is to identify what are potential landmarks within the city. Okay? And then it may be up to that individual on whether they want to landmark the property or whether they don't. If it's the city, we would come to you, those kind of things. A couple of things I wanted to point out real quickly because these things came up in the school district. We had a list of items. We had three things way down the, that, the bottom. I know Mr. Miley sitting, sitting on my left, I think, on item number 10, took exception to the landmarking. Those items are now not part of the character-defining, I think, eight items. There used to be 11. So what it says in here on page 5 of 16, it says, "In abo, in addition to the above criteria," and then it lists a couple, three different things after those. Those used to be part of the criteria, now they're kind of a add-on type thing.
Yeah.
So a big thing. The other thing I want to point out, because, and we talked about this, again, because I've been involved in the Teramina Historic District, which we're told the signs will be up for the Teramina Historic District by the end of June. Thank you, Greg. We went and met and set sites. But on the Teramina Historic District, when the vote was taken, the vote was, if you were an individual and you owned one house, you got one vote. If you were an individual that owned four houses, you got one vote. If you were a couple that owned one house, you got two votes. And it went on and on from there. And so what we've done here is we have clarified this that if you own one house, you get, this is in doing, in determining the majority within a historic district.
One vote per parcel, yeah.
You get one vote if you own one property, you get four votes if you own four properties. If you're a husband and wife that owns one property, you get one vote. So it's kind of back into what I perceive as being logic and something we don't have to explain.
Thank you, I saw that.
So that change was made on-
That change is made twice.
Yes.
Page 6 of 16 and 8 of 16.
Yes, so-
I, I also wanted to say thank you, Brian, for the clarity on here. The, the Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties is your guiding light. And I remember we've had many discussions about, why are we having our own standards when there's already state standards? So I really appreciate seeing that in there.
So, so you remind me of the other thing, going to Mr. Summers. We've had years and years and years of discussion on visible from the public right of way. And I believe that's the Secretary of Interior standard.
Yes, that is the federal standard.
Don't blame it on us. It goes back to you for saying, yeah, use that Secretary of Interior. Anyway, thank you all very much.
As long as you don't have to use a pair of binoculars, we're happy, okay?
Thank you.
And you can change with the Secretary of Interior though.
Can we have a one-minute break?
Oh, we've been asked for a one-minute break, sure.
Thank you for your work.
Short recess. And thanks, Brian.
Open it up and have more people be able to be on the council. I suggest shorter meetings would be a greater inducement than the money.
We've started doing that.
Yeah, so, okay, and I'll shut up in order to be able to achieve that shorter meeting.
You know, on a serious note, realistically, to do our job, as our, as issues before us seem to me to become more complex, and to do a good job on the council requires a lot of research and meeting with people. So, I don't, you know, all kidding aside, I don't think shorter meetings are in the cards, even though, you know.
All kidding aside, I think that they should be in the cards, yeah.
Well, we haven't succeeded so far, okay?
No, we've been actually doing quite well in the last couple of weeks now. If we also pop for another hundred and thirty dollars a month on the stipend, you know, we're almost there.
Okay, so I'll, you know, I have a better understanding than I, when I was here last time, but I still think, because I don't think we want to bring this up every year, I think it's if we, if, I want to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance increasing the city council member compensation to, what was that, seven hundred and, what was it, seven hundred and forty?
Seven sixty.
Seven hundred and sixty. I think that, and I think that does make a difference in attracting more people on the council. So, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Okay, well, then I guess.
Is it possible to maybe designate a date whenever you revisit that, or should we do that? Because you're concerned about doing it every year, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Do you have a thinking about whenever you want to revisit this, so it's not in thirty years?
I'm not sure I understood the prelude to your motion. What does that have to do with every year, if it's only a flat amount?
Because once, once we, to me, it feels like if we go for the, whatever it was, two percent rather than the five percent, it feels like it'll just get revisited.
Well, it's going to be revisited. The reason for the lag is because nobody's revisited, what, in ten years or something? I don't know, whatever length of time.
Twelve.
Twelve years, so.
Well, I just say that if we go with a slightly higher figure, that there's no, that, to me, then there's no need to revisit it again next year. And this does not go into effect until after the election. So, that's, that's, that's my logic.
And with respect to that last point, just for the mayor and council's clarification, an annual increase wouldn't be of much effect because the government code requires that an election intervene before any increase takes effect. So, if you did annually, it still wouldn't take effect until the next election. So, it should really be a biannual conversation, if the council so chooses.
Okay, that, that, that supports my.
Even if it's tied by formula in advance?
The, the government code specifically prohibits advanced formulas as well. It has to be a straight American amount.
Is that new?
Yeah, relatively new.
Yeah, okay.
I can't forget exactly, within the last ten years.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for council. What is the allowable annual increase?
Five percent per year since the date of the last increase.
So, we're allowed five percent, the council's allowed to, to increase itself five percent. Has to wait till the next election, so that's going to presumably be two years rather than one year, which is about the two percent, a little bit more than the two percent that is being suggested here, so.
That's right. That's correct.
Going forward.
Right.
Going backward.
But then why?
Compounding it at five percent is substantially greater.
Right, let's see, yes, compounding it at five percent makes a big difference.
Well, and one point on that is that the attorney general has concluded that the five percent can't be compounded with the council. So, it's.
So, it's strictly six, it's five percent times twelve years is sixty percent.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, everything we're doing and considering is legal, correct?
Correct. What's proposed, the seven ninety, seven sixty per month is the max amount that is lawfully doable by the council. The only exception would be the voters can approve a higher amount.
I would hope staff is not proposing something illegal.
Not at all.
No, it's just, but.
Not to our knowledge.
We've double and triple checked the math.
Inadvertently, inadvertently.
Yes, and inadvertently, there's a lot of that going on at the national level right now.
Okay, all right.
We'd like to amend our application, right?
Okay, so we have a motion in a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, call a roll.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
No, only because it doesn't tie to the employee, but I understand it's not a bad decision, it's just.
I understand. I really do understand.
Okay, great, okay, motion's carried.
Okay.
Amendment to the agreement with our legal counsel. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a, another potential modest increase here, now that we've gotten through a, so a increase for council. This would be for a second amendment to the legal services agreement that we have with Mr. Summers' firm, called Atuno, Highsmith, and Watley. It would continue to designate Mr. Summers as the city attorney. It would extend the term by three years through August first of 2021. It would also have some changes in terms of the compensation rates and the specific number of hours that are in the contract for general legal services. So, the agreement would increase the number of hours for general legal service from currently sixty-five per month to seventy per month, but also just the rate in the agreement. The agreement previously had a fixed monthly retainer of twelve thousand dollars per month. This amendment would provide for a fixed monthly retainer of thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty per month, so an increase of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per month. The current agreement is, does have a termination date of August first of 2018, so as I stated, this would be a three-year extension of that. We did provide some historical information in terms of how the, where the, how the, how the city attorney bills have been coming in, and you can see we had a fairly high rate in fifteen, sixteen, and we're able to knock that down substantially in sixteen, seventeen, and then again, rather substantially in this current fiscal year. So, we're starting to trend a lot more closer to what we are supposed to be coming at in terms of the budget for this. So, the total cost for the year under this amendment would be a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for the city attorney. We have included that potential increase in the draft eighteen, nineteen budget, so if council approves this increase, there would not be any effect to the general fund budget as proposed right now for next fiscal year. And as I noted, it does change some of the, the rates. Those are all found in the attachment, the attachment aid to the staff report. We have to answer any questions.
This is a multi-year contract, does that mean, you know, no offense to our city attorney, but what is the exculpatory language, or is there any? For, I thought there was some reference to, could be shorter, subject to something or other in the agreement?
Yes, I'm trying to find that.
Termination provisions?
Yeah.
It says, unless otherwise terminated in accordance with the provisions of section six. There is section, section six.
Section six is in the existing legal service agreement, which I don't see attached, that provides for termination upon thirty days' notice for any reason.
Okay, I just didn't see it.
Yeah, I couldn't find it either, so it's not in here.
No.
I apologize for that.
Okay, other questions?
There's one, is that, is this?
Oh, I do have a card here. Severo.
Mayor Johnston, fellow, Mr. Councilmembers and staff. Went back to the dais language. I had the opportunity to interview Mr. Summers when he was up for, when we were looking for city attorney, and when I, we interviewed him, I thought he was actually fairly young, but extremely smart, smart and intelligent. And I know that first year after we got him into the city, we automatically just dumped a lot of work on his desk. And I think that he was very gracious in being able to put in extra hours to serve this community. I've seen an, just a, a large amount of growth and improvement in him, and I think he's, he's very fit in this community, and I've read through the staff report, it's impressive that he's actually gone his hours down. I think he, he really does deserve this rate increase, and he's, he's done good things for this community, and I know, I've heard people, our residents, been impressed by just his, his profession, professionalism, and just the way he conducts his response and the way he serves you guys as councilpeople and policymakers. So, I would be for giving him this rate increase.
Okay, thank you, Severo. Okay, other, any further discussion from the dais? Okay, we have a.
So moved to approve you.
Okay, we got.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Hmm, yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Thank you, I look forward to serving you guys.
Thank you. You're the best.
Okay, we are on number five. Requests from two councilmembers for discussion of the Carnegie Mellon University Design Center memo.
I hit the jackpot.
Oh, yeah, okay, we got a bunch here. Good heavens.
Whoa.
Okay, who wants to?
Do you want to hear from staff?
Yeah, right, yeah. Who wishes to introduce the subject, and then I've got several cards here. And in keeping with my desire to encourage people to run for council, I'd like just to be able to get through the agenda in the next thirty minutes.
Fifteen.
So, I'll start.
Okay, I'll hold you to that.
Mayor, I'll start the discussion at, Councilman Wyrick and I have been meeting with this group for about six months, and, and this, this group was in our community probably a year and a half ago, doing a, a study on water. And, in fact, you were there for one of the days.
Bill and I were on that.
When Wyrick was there. And my takeaway from that group, in that meeting, and I was there for the whole weekend, was that this group of people offer an incredible way to solve problems in communities utilizing the community. So, it's a bottom-up way to manage, I used to call them big hairy problems, but now they're called wicked problems, but just the process that they brought, and the skills that they brought, the knowledge that they brought, it just overwhelmed me with, if there was another way of solving community problems, this is by far the best way. And we solved a lot of, in fact, as I'm looking at Kathy Nolan, her and I were in the same group, and in four days, we, we created quite a few solutions to the water crisis that we were facing. Now, it never went anywhere, it was not adopted. And at that time, at, at that time, they were looking for funding sources, and so they went away, and we went away, and eventually, someone in the community brought them back. And then we started meeting with them again, and we started talking about some of the problems that we're facing as a community, and it's not just water. There's a transition I know that this community is looking at, to, to another form of sustainability and a sustainability application into all that we do. So, instead of tourism at restaurants and hotels, it's tourism to come and see a different type of sustainability that we can create. So, I was, I just think it's a great opportunity, they are bringing a funding source into this process. So, technically, alls we are is the, the source that gets to be studied, we get to have an input in how we're being studied, we get to have an input in the results of how we're being studied, and I'll turn it over to Bill.
I don't have much to add, except this proposal basically is to have a partnership with a, a very prestigious academic body that has relationships all over the world. I'm grateful that they've chosen to ask us to endorse their, their efforts on our behalf. It does not involve any encumbrance of funds. If they're successful, we're going to have more resources available to accomplish the kind of sustainability efforts that we want to accomplish, so I think it's just a win-win.
Okay, let's hear from the public. Kathy. I guess, quasipublic and public, public and private.
Mayor, councilmembers and staff, Kathy Nolan, three four zero, Avenue de la Vereda, and also Planning Commissioner. Thank you, Councilmember Haney, for the description. Basically, you said everything I wanted to say. But, yeah, I did have the opportunity, actually, it was a year ago, last May, to be in the workshop, and I know Councilmember Wyrick and Councilmember Haney and I were in the governance table, and I completely agree that this transition by design provides a template and a method to bring people from all different, wearing different hats. In other words, at that presentation, there were members of the public, there were potentially farmers, there were people from water companies, the governance group, and a couple others. So, people that may have different ideas about how to do something, or not even agree, but to come together and find the common thread so that you can actually solve a problem. And I felt like the transition by design group was very neutral. I know they're coming from somewhere else in the country, and I know people always come up and say this is Ojai, and that we need to solve it, but they, basically, the solutions are coming from, from Ojai, meaning the valley or whoever participates. But I also wanted to drop a seed, and, and maybe this is a little premature, but I'm not sure exactly what the final arrangement will be between the city of Ojai and transition design, but you may want to consider having another local agency, like, say, the Green Coalition, for example, be part of that. And then, I know that they talked about bringing their own funding, and that's for this kind of design preliminary stage, but let's just say we come up with something that we actually want to do and implement, if the city's a partner and maybe even another agency, we may be able to apply together for more funding so that something can actually happen, more than just the design phase. In other words, we're going to see results. So, I would encourage that. I'm not sure exactly how that will look, but I'm, once again, just planting the seed for that.
Actually, I agree with you on that, and, but what's, what's interesting about meeting with Terry and meeting with Cheryl, and Cheryl is the actual, let's call her the funding agent, for lack of a better word, she is going, you know, she's going to be looking for funding sources to actually initiate the studies, and I imagine as part of what we do with them would be for her to actually find funding sources to help us actually enact any of the problems that, that we come to solve.
That's what the MOU says, doesn't it?
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, fine, thank you, Kathy. Severo. And everybody can just say ditto if they like.
Yes, I, I also agree, I like what's being proposed here tonight, I do agree with it, I see a source, a sense of collaboration. This is something that, in my understanding, a lot of people want to do, and we have the opportunity with the great university and, and organization that has proven track records. I hope that today it'll be unanimous within the council.
Okay, thank you, Severo. Todd?
Thank you. Todd Cosart, Executive Director of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. I got to, I got to pitch you guys really quick, it'll only take me a second. I am so appreciative of the efforts that you make on behalf of the city. It's really impressive to watch the way you guys work, and it, I just feel like it's something I want to go on the record, say, being able to say. As far as this particular motion, I think that one of the things that I would like to say on behalf of the Green Coalition is that we would encourage, we'd encourage your consideration of this memo of understanding from the Design Institute. There's been a number of our Green Coalition members who have attended and participated in the gatherings where transition design was introduced and explained thoroughly and as a community process that allows us to collaboratively envision and design a sustainable and climate resilient Ojai, which I think is something that truly aligns with the mission of the Green Coalition. So, as it does, you know, align with our mission and our purpose, you know, we've most recently been actually exploring a number of their approaches in the Restoration and Resilience Council that, that the Green Coalition facilitates on a, on a monthly basis that came out as a result of the Thomas Fire. So, we're, it's something that we're very interested in pursuing, you know, from my perspective, as an educator, systems theory pretty much tells us that, you know, we're going to get out of a system what we designed into a system. And we at the Green Coalition would truly be honored to, to partner with the city and the community and the Design Institute in a process that intentionally designs the kind of city that we would like to have, one that's environmentally and economically and culturally sustainable for ourselves and for future generations. So, I do encourage that you consider this, this memorandum.
Okay, thank you, Todd, and Janet?
Janet. Hello, everyone, Janet Sagarnott, first time I've ever done this in Ojai, but I appreciate that we're invited to speak, and, and I very much am in support of the city of Ojai engaging the Carnegie Mellon Design Center and their team, including Cheryl. I think it's going to be an incredible advantage in terms of stakeholder engagement to have an outside party. I don't think that they are in any way telling us what to do, I think that they are expert at what they do, and I have studied this kind of process myself. I also think, having pursued, looking at, at opportunities for funding for climate resiliency workshops and community engagement, that our applications for grants will be much stronger. I was in the Bay Area with Kathy this weekend, and we found that there is a, a group of business people statewide who are looking at funding these kinds of agencies, and having a group like the Carnegie Mellon Group will really enhance our ability to secure funding in more than six figures, we're talking in the millions. So, that kind of funding can really make a dent in our vulnerability. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, guys, we have a motion.
With approval.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I did attend with Bill, what, it was about a year ago, and then Randy, and I think Randy and Bill did it the second time. The process is good, and obviously, the, the institution that's doing it is kind of legendary for many of their programs. My experience has been that it is really educational and it's kind of sensitivity training for all those who attend to understand the, the reasons for different perspectives becoming, you know, the old comment, Gerta, or somebody says, you know, where you stand on an issue depends on where you sit. And one of the problems we had was we didn't have some of the people that are, the first one that Bill and I participated in, we didn't have all segments of the economy, and so one of the really important ones wasn't there regarding the water issue. So, having them wanting to partner with us and use us as a lab, in effect, we have name recognition, we're noted for at least being open to these things, and so apparently they're, the university's willing to invest in us. So, it seems like a really good idea, you know, it will remain to be seen as to how much money comes our way, but as our last speaker, Janet, said, you know, there, there's money out there that, you know, the Gates Foundation and people who are going around the world wanting to put money into things to demonstrate how we can have a better future, and this might be a good place to start.
Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion slightly, I've had, I've had a whisper from the city manager.
Oh, okay.
And the way the agenda item is written, it might be best for the motion to be direct staff to prepare for final adoption in the consent calendar at the next meeting.
Right.
And we would have no problem bringing it back on June twelfth.
Okay. I'll second that again.
And, and the, the financial impact will remain pretty much the same based on the way the memorandum of agreement is written, okay?
Yeah, we, staff took a very quick glance, and we didn't see any serious fatal flaws here, so.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Now, was that our, no, we have one more item. It's been a replacement for item six.
Right.
This is with regard to an op-ed piece.
Correct, right, we, we took off the water manager one in the amended agenda and added this request for the council to support the op-ed piece.
There you go.
Okay.
I believe there's a copy of it on the dais as well for everybody, just so.
Do you want us to present this, Mayor?
Okay, well, it, it appeared to me, although I've heard questions raised, this is, who wrote this, by the way?
The Ventura River Water District wrote it.
Okay, and, and this is what, it looks like it's sort of is in support of what we did.
Yes, it's basically in spirit, in a, in a, basically in support of the resolution we already passed, and we were told we needed to bring it to council in order for the city to sign, to direct the city manager to sign officially for the city, and that's why it's here.
And is this, what we had endorsed a couple of weeks ago was the, I have a hard time calling it the Three Sisters Plan, but the Water Advisory Group's concept. When I read this, it sounded like it was saying the same thing, but is, does anybody read it differently?
No, I don't read it differently, it's just to, yeah, basically, they want to do an op-ed with all the agencies signed on it.
Right, but is the, are the comments made in here consistent with the other?
I think so.
Well, I, I had, I didn't think it was that well-written, you know, there's, the, when I first read it, it implies, it says, okay, let me just go through the lines. First of all, I wasn't happy with the opening paragraph, I would have worded that differently, but then it says, so what can we do? Lake Acetus has plenty of storage, so we don't need another dam. I think that just say plenty of storage capacity. New wells, and then, I'll skip, I'll skip through. It implies, to me, that language implies that state water can be pumped into the lake, and we know that's not the case. Somehow, this needs to be worded differently. And then I went through the whole letter, it's been a long evening, so I can't remember everything, but my concern, I would like to sign on, but my concern is that once you sign on, if it's a joint letter, first of all, this, I don't know if this is the final draft, I don't think it should be, and then, we can't make any cha, you know, once, how does that work, if they make, make changes in the letter and we've signed on, does it come back?
What's, can I answer that, Mayor?
Sure.
The, people from the, the person handling this with the Ventura River Water District, they, they worked on this, they, they were hoping we would sign on to it, they consider a, a final draft asking if we would sign on to it.
Well, doesn't it strike you, that opening paragraph, doesn't it sound like they're implying that state water would flow into Lake Acetus, or am I just?
I'm, I'm not seeing that, I'm thinking, I'm thinking it's just asking that we look at, you know, the redundancy that the state water project allows with all kinds of options of how that's actually done.
Right, all the possibilities.
All the possibilities. I don't think it.
Fortunately.
In other words, there, I don't think it implies putting water in the reservoir, frankly. I just don't see that.
Okay.
But it doesn't.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see it in the first paragraph, but the second paragraph, I do think it implies that, says, to bring state water into Western Ventura County using Lake Acetus as the storage facility.
Yes, yes.
Well, if I could, if I could, again, the, I think you're talking about the second sentence? Or the third sentence?
Second paragraph.
Yeah, the second paragraph. Says, we're fortunately, Acetus Municipal Water District has a contract for state water from Northern California, that's just a fact.
Mm-hmm.
And the lake large enough to store surplus local water when other supplies are available. And I think that means very precisely that it means we can avoid using local water if we had other supplies, which doesn't mean putting it in the reservoir, it says, store surplus local when other supplies are available, all we need to build pipelines and facilities to import that water. So, I'm taking that to mean what that gives us is the ability to not use lake water if we had the ability to tap other supplies.
It could be interpreted that way, but I suspect a lot of people in the community might not read it that way or understand it that way. Was this vetted at all, or?
It was vetted by the other agencies.
No, but was it vetted with, I, I guess, since we have kind of endorsed the Water Advisory Group, have they endorsed this?
I couldn't answer that, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would feel much more comfortable in, in putting our name to something if all the parties, particularly the ones that were endorsing, if that's what it means, because it's a, you know, that's one of the big differences between.
Yes.
Lake Acetus and their concern that they not.
No, I, I agree. No, I agree.
Put water in the lake, yeah.
Well, I guess one option here would be to ask that we, perhaps, Mayor, I mean, you're the mayor, perhaps you get with the Mr., the people that forwarded this to us and ask if they would consider changing the language? Or do you delegate that to one of us to try to do that?
Well, I'd be happy to talk with them, but I'd also like to talk with the Water Advisory Group.
Okay.
Yeah, if we're going to all sign on, it should be inclusive.
Yeah.
Well, these are, these are agencies, not, and the WAG is not, they're not an agency.
Well, they don't have to sign necessarily, but I would, you know, draw it.
I would think, Mayor, that the most important thing that this document provides is another nudge to Casitas that all of the water agencies and the city of Ojai all believe strongly that they need to get on board and they need to stop dragging their feet.
Right.
And that's the gist of what this letter's about. We can parse the words, and I don't think the meaning changes. What it means is, do something, and do it now.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Mr. Mayor, and why, I mean, I know Casitas says they don't want to have storage of any foreign water.
Right.
For whatever reason. But I see no reason we shouldn't store foreign water there. I mean, I don't have all the data, but if we're bringing state water here, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we as a city want the water to be stored in Lake Casitas?
There's a difference in the water quality, and there's, it also depends on where it's coming from, you know, that they put in the brine line, primarily, they discovered that most of the, much of the salts in the water that they were taking out and putting into the brine line over at Cigas were coming through the state water system.
Okay, but we're going to be, we're going to be utilizing that water. I mean, that water, if it's not good enough to put in the lake, how is it good enough for us?
Because it's more an ecological thing, they claim. I'm not a scientist, I don't.
They've explained that it's not compatible. It would disrupt the ecology of the lake.
So we're saying that if, if a way to solve our community problem does not include putting it in the lake, so therefore, we continue with the problem, we'd rather not put it in the lake.
No, the recognition is that other entities lower on the east side of the food chain or the water chain are going to be utilizing this water one way or the other. They're either going to use it whole, they're going to blend it, or they're going to do something to alter it as it comes through. What Casitas is saying is they don't want to go through that process and bring that water up to them. I think that's a, that's an argument that can be had down the road. I think the most important thing of anything that we do with state water is get the infrastructure built so that we can buy water or procure water from more than one agency in California. And there's 126 agencies that you can actually purchase water from. And I'm not sure about their argument about the water not being able to be mixed with our, with Casitas' water, because the county of Santa Barbara actually has a direct source of state water, and they're blending it and they're putting it, I believe, in Lake Ochuma. So again, I think there's a bigger discussion down the road, but at this point in time, it's still, it's still about the process, and we need to get Casitas moving forward in this process.
Isn't Casitas already participating in the plumbing part of this thing?
Not as a lead, no.
No, not as a lead, but the lead agency is going to be the city of Ventura regardless, because even Cigas is not the lead.
Again, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the city of Ventura is, has their capital improvement program, the part of the project that takes water across the city.
Right.
It doesn't have anything in their capital improvement program that would bring the water, option of bringing the water up to the Casitas Treatment Plan.
Currently, the consultant has been asked to assess what is required to do that.
But I think the ask here is for the Casitas Board, again, I'm going to read the, and what we don't have yet on the last page, "We would welcome a written commitment from Casitas Municipal Water District's Board to import their state water into the Ojai Valley." In other words, the, what they have not done yet is committed to the bill, participating with partners in developing this, this infrastructure.
Right.
And I think that's what this is about, is asking for that commitment.
Okay, well, if you, if you would like to refer this to the staff and to me, I'll meet both with the Water Advisory Group and the signatories or the potential signatories on this, and the OBGMA, and see if we have the language, because this seems like it's more of a political statement than it is.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, right, and as you say, it's to nudge them.
To nudge.
We want to be sure that we're, you know, we're starting to come together, we don't want to do it in a public way that starts pulling us apart any more than we've already been, but time is wasting, I agree with that, and there is a need for a nudge.
Do we get, by the next meeting, get a report back from you and staff as to where you stand with this?
Well, I will, I will do it between now and the next meeting, and I'll bring it back, okay?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
We do have cards.
We had a couple of.
Five minutes, Mayor.
Yeah.
Hold on to two.
We got three, okay. So let, Renee, come on up.
Hello, Mayor Johnny, and members of the council. It was good to see you yesterday, the other, after the Chautauqua talk about water, where a lot of these issues were also discussed. So it was really good to see you there, I think it was a really good discussion. From my point of view, I like what you just said at the end there, Johnny, and what Suzie was saying earlier. I think there are, unfortunately, some misleading comments in here. When I read the paragraph about if Casitas is large enough to store any surplus water, all we need to do is build the pipelines to get more water in the lake, is what this appears to be saying.
The impression that.
That's the impression I got. And so I agreed that it wasn't quite worded to have the impact that I think you would like it to have. The other thing is, at the result of the meeting yesterday, I talked to Richard, how do you say his last name?
Aegis.
Aegis?
Yeah.
And I said, I thought it would be a really good idea, by the way, my name is Renee Roth, I didn't introduce myself, I'm with the Save Our Water Ojai Campaign for the Green Coalition. I said it would be a really good idea for us to come up with a fact sheet about the Ventura River watershed, our supplies, our demands on the watershed, what the impact of rainwater does have on the lake storage and the groundwater basins, so we can start doing a water budget. This is something that was discussed in Ventura River watershed meetings when I was there, a water budget saying, we get more rainfall, it brings up the levels of the lake and the basins, how much does it bring it up? And that creates the demand for future water so you don't overtax your supplies. And that requires data. And I think you're currently taking that approach. The city's, I think, taken the high road, you've got Sierra Watershed Progressive on board. I saw the end of your last meeting where you're talking about investing in low-impact development-type projects. So I think the idea of diversifying the portfolio and being able to state clearly, there are many options that Casitas is looking at right now, and I think those costs just haven't been put together yet. I'm not opposed to state water, trust me, I'm not opposed, but we're talking about $100 million, and who's going to pay for that when there are many other projects being discussed that might be a little bit more affordable? So I think, you know, pushing one at the exclusion of having really good data and having an approach that looks at all the options and puts those together on a cost-benefit analysis would be a good, a good approach in the long term. And I think that's happening. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And time is not our friend right now, as far as the price. No, I'm not referring to the meeting, I'm thinking in general, you know, we're likely to run out of time probably before, or at the same time, we're running out of water. And so, part of it is to try to get all the people to move fairly quickly. Todd, come on up.
Thanks for the opportunity to be able to speak to you again. I can certainly understand the importance of being able to have a fail-safe mechanism like the state water in our back pocket for future concerns, because we certainly do not know exactly what, what the future is going to hold in store for our ability to be able to have the, the water security that we're going to be able to need. I'm going to, I'm going to put on my, I'm going to put on my environmental sustainability educator ad, though, for a second, and, and just comment that it's never a good idea to, to take natural resources out of one ecosystem to serve another ecosystem. And, and that's essentially what we're doing with the state water. And I realize it's a done deal, but it is something that really should be considered, especially when we haven't really taken that complete opportunity to look at the watershed approach, to be able to know exactly how efficient we can be in our conservation and our water management approach. And I think it is one of the great opportunities we're going to have with the Sierra Watershed and Regina's group, but I definitely think that it is work that needs to be done before we make this kind of a commitment. And although I completely understand that this is time-sensitive, that we may not be able to sit back and wait because there are economic reasons why this may be affordable at this time in, in the infrastructure. But I do think it's important to keep in mind the larger ecological issues we're talking about here, because some, you know, some particular ecosystem is losing a particular resource that would allow that ecosystem to be able to maintain its own ecological harmony. And we're bringing it into our ecosystem without really making the effort to, to manage and budget our own, you know, water, you know, approach. So I just think it's something to keep in mind, and I think it's, you know, I appreciate having the opportunity.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Bill, did you have one more, one more round?
For the record, Bill Miley. I know Jack Curtis, and I respect his thinking and his past accomplishments, and lots of, lots of things, obviously, are going on, and just read the Ojai Valley News on Friday. I think one of the better moves that you folks can make would be to invite the Casitas Chair and the General Manager to come here and present their plan and respond to your questions. I do believe that, the way I read this draft, it does basically say, "We want to import water into the Ojai Valley, and we want to store it in Lake Casitas for emergen," it doesn't say emergencies, but that's true. You already referenced the one, "All we need is to build a pipeline to import the water." The last, second to last paragraph, "Importing state water will support property values and will benefit everyone in Ojai regardless of their water provision. Importing water when the lake has available storage reduces the years," I know there's this discussion about, well, maybe they didn't really mean putting it in the lake. The plan that I understand, and I think this is true, is that Casitas says, if the state water goes to Ventura, Ventura agrees not to take the 6,000 acre-feet per year out of the lake, and that will remain in the lake, and it will start to increase.
Correct, yeah.
And then the last, second to last paragraph, it says, "We would welcome a written communication from Casitas Board to import their state water into the Ojai Valley." That means bringing it up into the Ojai Valley. So if they don't want it, and they're running this big system over here, and we're going to support a letter that doesn't have, as one of their authors, the groundwater agencies, where are they? They have the Senior Canyon and the city of Ojai. So I, I think that we'd be better off parsing this a little bit more and asking them to come, speak, discuss, ask them why they say they don't want any foreign water, and then go from there. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, so, it is, are we agreed that we'll, we'll put it off to our next meeting, and I will try to get in touch with the two or three parties that maybe can shed some light on it? I think what Bill Miley say, says, is, with or without this letter, it's not a bad thought for us to get together, the council, Council and Casitas or the management, and have them, you know, talk a little bit about what these obstacles are before it's so late that the cost either goes up or the problem can't be solved, so.
I'm going to make a comment. For anyone who missed the panel, the water panel last night that was hosted by the Ojai Democratic Club, it was videotaped, and it was one of the most exceptional panels I have heard to date. It was so user-friendly, so clear, and if you missed it, I highly recommend watching it. I'm sure it's going to be posted on YouTube, and I'll, as soon as I find the link, I'll post it on my Facebook page and share it widely. It is absolutely worth listening to, about 90 minutes, and opening statements by Richard Haggis alone are, were worth it.
And Mayor Johnston, is there, would there be an objection to we having access to that YouTube link through the city website? Don't we have a water, kind of, a water collection of information about water? Is there any objection to that?
I don't think there's any objection if it can be done. Can't you just put a?
The only concern that comes to mind sitting right now is that it was hosted by a political body.
Yes, it was.
And the city's website is funded by public money and can't take political positions.
And have information pieces.
Yeah, I wasn't at the event, I don't know if it strided the line if it's pure, pure information, or if it was also involved political advocacy.
No, there wasn't any, they were just the sponsors.
Just talking about water.
Yeah.
Or maybe we should get the other political advocacies in the valley to do their own meeting, and then we could YouTube them all.
Yeah.
All right, well, I don't want to.
Okay, well, we're starting to wander, guys.
Anyway, yeah, we, it was videotaped in a quality way, and we're going to have it accessed some way or the other.
Yeah. I want to give absolute thanks and credit to Councilmember Wyrick for having the foresight to arrange to videotape it. Thank you very much.
Well, actually, Mayor, I'd like to add one more thing, you know, they had asked Councilman Wyrick for us to actually sit on a panel with them, and Will, and Bill said, "You don't need us, what you need are people who understand this issue with a great deal of knowledge." And that's why those four members were invited. So thank you, Bill, for doing that, too.
Okay, yeah, that was a good, good group that was there. Okay, let's go for the last round, are there any reports from the council?
Oh, yes.
You're all excused if you'd like to.
Are we already there? 9:35.
Yeah, let's, don't waste it, though.
Oh, I just, are we going to take turns, or?
Yeah, okay, Paul, do you have a, do you have a report? No, okay, I don't have a report.
Are you going to read us, are you going to read us the newspaper?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone saw the excellent letter from Delaney Ellis of the plans for our demonstration garden. Did you see that in the Friday Ojai Valley News? I won't read it to you then, but if you didn't read it, you'll, it's such an encouraging letter of what we're going to see on, behind our, our city hall.
Okay, thank you.
Years in the making. No, I don't have anything, but I do want to, remember, we want to do over additions to the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
We aren't to there yet. Bill, do you?
Only additions to the agenda.
Okay, I have, the city manager, do you have a, any reports you want to make?
Very quickly, just want to note that we missed the May joint meeting with the Planning Commission, and so we'd like to reschedule that to July 10th. We normally meet with them three times a year, so if, I can send an email out, and you can check your calendars, but we were proposing that we do a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on July 10th. That would make up for the one that we didn't do this month, so we'll send an email query on that. Lastly, I want to let the council know that we are moving forward with making some changes to the fencing around the Trimponarch. So I've spoken with our Public Works Director, and we're moving forward to implement that, and making sure that we've contacted all parties and taking care of all the concerns there, so that will be moving forward quickly. Also want to note that there are going to be a couple of plaque dedications, including, I think you heard from Mr. Haggis tonight, but there will be a dedication for the David Mason Memorial Plaque coming up this, next Monday, May 28th at 2:00 p.m. at the east end of Libby Park. So again, that's coming up on Monday, 2:00 p.m. at Libby Park for the David Mason Memorial Plaque dedication. And then there will be a dedication for the Corey Iverson Plaque. Mr. Iverson was the firefighter who lost his life tragically in the Thomas Fire response. That is scheduled to be done on Ojai Day, Saturday, October 20th, at 10:30 a.m. And so, and we'll remind you on the details on that one as we get a little bit closer. Also want to note that we are going to be closed Monday for the Memorial Day holiday. There was a very good open house held by the Rec Department, hard to believe now that this was their fifth annual open house. It was held last Saturday at Sarzati Park, so that was well-attended and a good kickoff to the summer season. And then lastly, I want to work, note that we, staff has submitted paperwork to use CAL FIRE to begin the clearing of the Stewart Canyon behind City Hall. We're also looking to see if we can
Thank you.
Possibly augment any of that work with Prop 1B grants, so we're going to take a look. a look at that as well.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And see if we might be able to get a little additional help on that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, items for the agenda. This doesn't necessarily mean we're going to... When we're going to schedule it, but we're just bringing up things that the council...
Mr. Mayor, I've had a lot of communication with members of the public with regard to what appears to be, although I've come to find out it may not be, the illegal parking and residence of RVs along streets and highways within our city. And in talking with the city manager, it turns out that there are some real difficulties in enforcing any kind of a rule and regulation with regard to that, but I've actually seen and had calls from people that have an RV parked in front of their house that people have been living in for up to two weeks, not relatives of theirs, they are strangers, and as long as they move their RV 18 inches every 48 hours...
Right.
There's very little that can be done about it. So in doing some research and talking to the mayor of Ventura, and also talking to one of the deputy city attorneys of Ventura, I asked him what they were doing about it, because I was told that they had ordinances that were in place currently that helped enforce that. And they do. They have ordinances against living and sleeping in the vehicles, living or sleeping in the RVs, the permits. If you want to have someone that's a guest, they can stay there for a certain period of time, but it requires a permit. Permits are issued by the police department, and I can pass on the statutory authority if you're so inclined, Mr. Mayor, for me to provide it to the city manager with regard to taking a look at these ordinance to see if they actually enhance our current...
Okay, good idea.
Yes, definitely.
And then hopefully getting it onto a future agenda if that happens to help in terms of eliminating that problem.
Okay.
And if you... And the county is having a similar problem. If you notice where we... Where it goes from in Casita Springs, where it goes from the two-lane highway to the main highway, heading towards Ventura on the left on the access road, there's a half a dozen people living in their RVs right along there. And I attempted to contact the county on behalf of a client to see what we could do there, and there was very little, if anything, that could be done.
Well, they have the same issue around the lake. They have people just living in their motorhomes around the lake, so...
Okay, so the city manager and the city attorney will take a look at that, and if there's a way that if there's some...
In fact, we're already looking at this. The concern has been raised by the police chief as well in just a call last week, and so we've begun looking at it. We will look at it. We'll get something back to council.
Well, just on a related note, we... I don't have it in front of me, but we received a report on the homeless population, and I'm sure that this... We have to acknowledge what's driving this is that people can't afford to rent a home. You know, I mean, if we trade in people living in RVs for people living on the street without their RVs, you know, we're just... So it's a... I agree. It's an unfortunate situation, but I think to solve it, we have to get to the root of it.
Well, I would agree with that statement, but again, when it's parked in front of your house, it's generally a different feeling. What I would like to bring up, though, a good point, if I can, real quick, Mayor, is the fact that with the death of that individual in Ventura, I've heard that there's actually a clearing out of migrants in Ventura, and there's... Has a sense that we're getting more, and they're not necessarily homeless, but we're getting an element that's coming to our community that hasn't been here in a while. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. In fact, someone called me last night and said that there were six of these individuals. They couldn't move. They were completely drunk, and they were in the grassy area in the...
Or the plaza, yeah.
Yeah. And they did... And I guess there was a recital of some type, and so all these 13- and 14-year-old children were coming out and seeing this. So it's just something to bring to point that, you know, if we don't bring it to your attention, you can't solve it, so...
Okay, and Bill?
Yeah. At some future date, I would request that we put on the agenda our code enforcement protocols for review and discussion again. We have long directed, for example, that we not do proactive investigation of people abusing the short-term rental prohibition. We may want to revisit that and think about that. We don't do very aggressive cost recovery of enforcement activities, because we didn't want to be too intrusive. We didn't want to be too, you know...
Heavy-handed.
Heavy-handed, but on the other hand, I continue to get reports that people are finding ways to avoid a short-term rental ban by operating under the radar, doing referrals for the activity, perhaps even associated with some of the hotels I have heard repeated stories about. And I don't know whether they're true or not, but I think at some point we might want to have a discussion about our enforcement protocols and see if, in fact, some of the past directions to staff need to be revised.
Okay, and we may want to do that during the workshop for budget, because it is partially it's driven by how much money we want to spend on it, but I would agree with you. I think that there are some areas, and we need to sort of triage what's important, you know, what's a lost cause, what can be salvaged, and what'll get better on its own, you know? So, okay. Anything else?
Well, are we going to add some things to the agenda, just for future agenda?
I thought that's what we were doing.
Okay, so I would just like to add your rent stabilization comment. I just think that that's something that needs to be talked about, and again, that's what I look at Carnegie Mellon for, is I think that they're going to be able to actually lead a great discussion in this community on affordability, so...
Well, I would, rather than, you know, at some point, it will... Would come to the council agenda if there's something that we can do, but is that something that the city manager and the city attorney could look into and see what are the options? That question, I think, was asked of our city manager in an interview with the Ojai Valley News about a month or so ago.
Right, right.
You know, what are the tools that are available with regard to, you know, the affordability of housing in the town? If... I assure you, if anybody's reading the paper, whether it's the Wall Street Journal, the LA Times, surf the net, the problem you brought up, Bill, on short-term rental and the problem with rents is worldwide, so, yeah.
I can work with the city attorney. We can bring a written report back to council with some options, and then council can take a look at that and decide if they want to give some further direction to staff.
I had one other... I had two other items, real quick. You know, a letter of compliance. Do we require any of the nonprofits that are doing business with the city to submit their annual letter of compliance with the State of California for their nonprofit status?
I don't think we have, no.
Can you look into that?
Sure.
If we need to bring it back in his agenda, do so. And then there's another ordinance that the County of Santa Barbara has. It's the... I have it written down here. I can't read my own writing, but it's the... It's the Santa Barbara Hazard and Evasive Species Act, and what they do is they've taken a look at an ordinance, and they've applied it with their brush clearance programs. It's just something I... I think what I'll do is I'll do the homework on it, and I'll pick... And I'll bring it back to you and share it with you.
Okay.
So I can get more clarity on it, but it is an ordinance that's already written that actually tells the county of Santa Barbara how to remove and eradicate evasive species and to help in their fire prevention programs.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I have, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. We're done. Thank you. Unless the chief wants to extend the meeting.
The chief, yeah.
Nope, okay. We're done.